Our backup system, Joe, is that what this is?
Yeah. Good morning, I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting, the Board of Selectmen to order. It's Monday, June 15th. It is now 8:33. I'd like to ask Selectman Valistraces, the leadest in the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cole. We have one item to add to the agenda, and that is the contract, to consider the contract, with Valley Shores Emergency Communication Systems, and I would entertain a motion to add that to item, make that item 11, excuse me, 9A. Do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's done, okay. Item one, public hearing, to receive comment on programs to be included in the 2015 Neighborhood Assistance Act program. And number one, we'll have two items, that's the first item in the public hearing. Anybody wishing to comment on the Neighborhood Assistance Act program? Danita, please. Please state your name and address, please.
Danita Aruni, Shoreline Arts Alliance, 725 Boston Post Road. Just want to take this opportunity to thank the board for allowing us to participate in this program and supporting this effort for the nonprofits to acquire funding and support for our programs and services. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Denise Rose, Executive Director of the Seraph Foundation, and this year we have a different application. We're actually going to be looking for some energy conservation projects for our Texas Harbor location. And again, thank you so much for your support each year.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Peggy Bright, I'm the Executive Director of Women and Family Life Center, and I'd like to also thank you for this opportunity. The funding that we are seeking for is a source of funding very difficult for nonprofits to do through grants and donations to upgrade technology so we could advance our program. So it's a particular, unique opportunity for us. Thank you.
Any other organization wishing to come before the board on the 2015 Neighborhood Assistance Act program? See, now I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing.
Joe, should we just mention that there is an application from Lifelings, even though they're not here?
Yeah.
So the fourth application is Lifelings Corporation.
We can take that up, and we will take this up in the next...
While we vote.
In the regular session, okay? Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing and open the next item on the public hearing, which is an ordinance to amend the code of the town of Guilford, Chapter 2014, Parks and Public Places. And this in particular is regarding dogs on beaches. Lamest language, okay. Barbara. Watch yourself there.
Good morning, my name is Barbara Pine, I live at 136 Daniel Avenue in Guilford. I'm a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, and we made the request to the selectmen to modify the ordinance to really in, just add one word to the ordinance which says swimming beaches, not just beaches, because we would like it to be in line with the public health, the Connecticut Public Health definition of a swimming beach. We have two such beaches here in Guilford, and we are not asking for dogs to be allowed on Jacobs or Quanapug, but rather some of the other shorefront areas where they already are. And there are six of those in the town where water meets sand, but they're not swimming beaches. So that's essentially what we're asking for, it's one word.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to testify in the public hearing regarding dogs on beaches? Yes, sir. I need your name and address, please.
I'm Eric Wolf, 138 Spencer Avenue, currently the president of the Indian Cove Association. I want to speak in support of the modification of the ordinance, in particular to speak about the beach at Daniel Avenue. For the 21 years that I've lived in town, well, for 20 of the 21 years I've lived in town, that beach was open to dogs, and dogs were frequently walked at the beach and enjoyed the beach, until fit, within about a year, the no dog sign went up. Now, I understand that there's concern about dogs walking on the beach being a health concern. I want to point out that for 20 years, it did not have any impact on the shell fishing area there, the shell fishing area went just fine. Also, with a little bit of research, I've found that, here's a headline from an article in Chicago, it says micro, microbe-free beaches thanks to dogs. And so in many municipalities, they're using dogs patrolling the beach to keep the birds off the beach, which create a microbe problem. But by implication, that means that the dogs on the beach and their normal behavior does not impact the water quality negatively at all. So, thank you for your consideration of changing that ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Vincent Hutchings, I live at 14 Bay Street, Guilford, I'm also part of the Indian Cove Association, and I've been there 10 years now, this address, and for 10 years, I would take my dogs down and run on the beach, because the beach that we have, at high tide, there's no space with people on the beach. We even have a thing in our association that we can launch boats there, but only between certain times, because the beach is so full. So it has to be like before nine in the morning, or after seven o'clock at night. So it's no space on that beach at all, you know, for them to run at all. So, except for 10 years, the lower beach was the beach that we'd take the dogs down, and there's no one there, you know, they can run the whole length of the beach and everything, get some good exercise, and they love going into the water itself, too, like that. So, I hope you pass this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Joanne Basile, 21 North Reeves Avenue, also in Indian Cove, although this is not really an Indian Cove matter. I'd like to speak in support of the change in the ordinance. I think it's a wonderful compromise between the dog owners and other people who might have some issues about keeping dogs off of swimming beaches. I think it's a very good way for the Board of Selectmen to address a very large and growing number of citizens in Guilford, and to give them that opportunity. I'd also like to recommend, if there's a concern about people not being responsible, animal owners and not picking up after their animal, that the Board of Selectmen at some point consider putting fines on people, enacting a fine for failure to pick up after your dog. I know it's a difficult, or it would be a difficult ordinance to implement, but quite frankly, sometimes just that addition of, that additional threat would make people think twice about picking up after their animals, and as a dog supporter and active with other people in the town who support, who are active with dogs, we would all certainly support that kind of an ordinance change in Guilford. Thank you.
I'll just speak to that, that point. It, that, there's an infraction provision already in the ordinance, so because there's...
If it was posted, you know, people would know that.
Yeah, so it's there, and there's affirmative obligation to clean up after your dogs.
And is there a fine associated with it?
Yes.
Yes, there is, yeah.
So that would be great to have that publicized.
What about putting up plastic bags like you have in town, so people have an opportunity to pick up? There's garbage cans already.
In the summer, there are garbage cans at the water areas, but certainly having those baggies in that area would be good.
Anybody else wishing to address the board? Yes, sir.
My name is Jan Delaney, and I'm at 595 Mulberry Point Road, and for 45 years, my property has adjoined Daniel Avenue Beach, and we've called it Dog Beach for 45 years. I am definitely in support of this. I would love to see the dogs enjoy the water. We have dog walkers that carry their dogs into the water for therapy. It's just a wonderful place to enjoy your dog. I've never seen an incident with two dogs. They don't leave beer cans, they don't leave glass, they...
Yes, they are not.
They're not barking, it's just wonderful. They don't party at night, it's... They don't come down to shave in the water, they don't come down and wash their clothes in the water. It's just wonderful for our dogs, and I really am in support of this. Thank you.
Think we should ban the people and allow the dogs?
That's a good idea.
Can they vote on that? Anyone else wishing to address the public hearing? Anyone against the, or in opposition to the change? One more time, anybody wishing to address the public hearing before we close it? Okay, I'll take the motion to close the public hearing?
Some move.
There a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing's now closed. Thank you, everyone. Item three, I'll wait for them, please. Item three, public forum on any agenda item, limited to three minutes. I guess we had most of that already, so I'll move along. Item four, approval of the minutes, 4 dot 1, approval of the minutes of June 1st, 2015, regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Some move. Second.
Second, Gary?
I think...
Dissions or corrections?
Yeah, I think under 14, the third paragraph down, maybe I read this. Okay, Mr. Millen said they could negotiate with awarded bid, we could not negotiate with awarded bidders. That's correct? So there should be a "not" in the, there, okay?
Trace, you have to?
Yes.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections? See, now I'll call for a motion, accept the minutes as corrected.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Item five, Finance Director, don't see her.
She's here.
Oh, there she is, she's just, she must have been in the hallway where everybody was sitting there. She's getting her papers together, Sheila. Good morning, I'm sorry, didn't see you there. Okay, how should we start? Revenue, I assume?
We will start with revenue, we have our report 11 months of the year, one month ago, for the fiscal year, and revenue, start with revenue, I'll get my report, but it looks great. I could tell you that I looked last year, we collected another $400,000 between now and the time we closed, the end of the year, so we have a surplus at the end of May, and I'm going to get my report. I may have to rely on Gary now, I got it right here.
Thank you, sir.
So, right now, we have, on the town side, a $631,000 surplus, that's the top part. And so if we stay, you know, on the same track as we were last year, we collected another $400,000, that brings us to about a million dollar surplus on the revenue, just on the town side. And as you could see, under the state of Connecticut, we have $113,000 surplus as well. And the $1,005,000 that's remaining to collect is the ECS grant, which we will get, that will be recorded, and we will get the whole, we're still waiting for that, though, we haven't seen it come in yet. So, we could expect over a million dollar surplus on revenue.
I have a question, on the town clerk side.
Mm-hmm.
On conveyance fees, this month, this month being May, as we're discussing, $113,000 is...
$131.
$131 was the whole, the whole department?
The whole one, if you look at the details, $113,000 on the conveyance fees, is that...
I think that some adjustments were made...
That seemed unusual for a month.
I think that there were some adjustments that were made, that made, you know, that made that number a little bit high.
So you're comfortable with that for the month?
I'm comfortable with the bottom line, yes, yes.
Good, okay.
And we're continually watching tax collections, because they're very strong, and, you know, we've balanced to the tax collector, and we're comfortable with that number as well, it looks great.
Okay, I'm not going to argue with big ones.
No. Okay.
Any other questions on revenue?
I would just note that at the Hartford Courit this morning, some of our fellow municipalities, although they're heavily city-based, are using tax collection companies to collect back taxes. Manchester just hired a tax collection company to get back taxes, which obviously adds to the cost and deals with the problems that they have, so we do a terrific job collecting taxes.
We do, and what happens is those companies usually don't charge you a fee, so it looks great, but they take your interest, so...
Okay.
Okay, on the expenditure side, we recorded the $100,000 transfer from contingency that was approved by the Board of Finance last month for legal. So at this point, there's only one small department that's over in their, at the department level, and that's Registrar Our Voters, $3,800. I didn't do a transfer for this month, we'll do it next month, and there most likely will be other small end-of-the-year transfers that will clean up at the same time. As far as payroll goes, I've been projecting payroll, because it's a little bit easier to kind of get a feel for where we're going to be, and it's consistent with what I've been projecting for the past, I guess, two months, about a $250,000 surplus, dollar On the non-personnel side, we are still expecting to break even, that's my conservative projection right now, possibly a little bit better, but if you take the $250,000 and combine that with a million or so, we're looking at a million two...
Surplus.
Surplus.
Okay. Okay. I did have a question, I see Rick Mater sitting there, on Park and Rec, it looks like we have a, can't find my notes, but quite a bit of encumbrances sitting there for doing its field maintenance. Rick, are we going to use that all up?
No, some of those POs will be cleared up in the next week or so.
Okay.
There are a few I already looked at last week, that we're going to start to cancel.
Okay, okay.
I'm glad you brought that up, because we have spent a lot of time in canceling encumbrances. The departments are giving them, as Rick said, they're sending them in, and we've canceled quite a few, so we're working on that as well.
Okay, when you figured, or estimated your year-end surplus, was that considered in there, or...
The encumbrances?
Yeah.
Well, the encumbrances, yes, because I considered that we're breaking even on the non-personnel side, and that's kind of where the encumbrances are related to, and there are going to be some that are going to stay on the capital side of general fund. We could just assume that those, those projects that are encumbered will be, and even the ones that are encumbered, they will probably be encumbered, because I would, will consider that the capital would be all spent.
Okay.
So...
First, Rick, if you keep your encumbrance on the building maintenance, you're going to be over.
Building maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll look at those again tonight.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm sorry I haven't talked to you sooner on this, but I was not available on Friday, so...
Out of curiosity, Sheila, what was the May expenditure for the Registrar Our Voters?
Um...
We're showing is almost $11,000, well, $1,820. No activity.
Well, it could have been the April referendum.
Okay, so it could have been stuff that's just...
Yeah, we could look...
Got paid in May?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on expenses?
It was the part-time poll workers to answer Gary's question.
Want to talk about insurance?
Yep, well, I see this with, you know, mixed, we, we, we had claims that exceeded the stop loss this month. So, we are now up to $1,056,000 in claims that were covered by our stop law. So, as far as the money goes, that's a good thing, because our premium was $845,000, so this is the first month that we actually exceeded that premium, and so that proves that it was a good business decision. So, $210,000 was, was, you know, our savings, and we have one more month to go, and I'm sure that it will be greater than that. It's unfortunate, because there's a lot of catastrophic claims. So we're projecting at this point about a $600,000 surplus at the end of the year, which is fantastic.
So this year, you're projecting that we wouldn't have to make a transfer to the Internal Service Fund, like we did last year?
No, nope. And it will, last year, we ended with, as you can see, an $8100 fund balance, it was basically even, there were a few little adjustments that we made at the end of the year, but, and we were happy with that, and now we should be very happy that we're going to end with about $600,000, and we didn't have to fund anything extra than what we projected our budget to be. That's good.
Okay. Any questions?
Um...
Anything else?
No, I have, and I don't know if you want to discuss this or not, but I, I worked on the capital, and I have excerpts of my capital report for you, and one of them has to do with the public works equipment.
Yeah, which we're going to handle.
Right, and that's why I bring it up. And the other one has to do with the town property projects that we've moved money from the Energy Task Force. So I didn't know if you wanted, you know, to take a look at this, or if I can, I can email it to you later, or whatever you'd like.
It's up to the board, we'll take one of them.
I could give you the...
Well, I would like to see the trucks, because we are going to handle that next, okay?
Yes.
And that's been confusing, the way we move money around there.
Okay, so I just would ask if you ignore the heading where it says Energy Task Force?
Okay.
Because I just, I took, copied a piece of the, and I could certainly, when Jim is explaining this to you, I can chime in if you need my help.
You want to take us through this?
Well, yeah, I could do that. Okay, so, these are the projects that, if you notice the account number, they're all the same account number on the right, on the left-hand side, and, because it was one lump sum that was bonded for, for public works equipment and vehicles, and it came up to $1,210,000. And basically, what we contemplated when we put together the resolution was an estimate of what the department needed at that time, but was for equipment for public works department. So, there's been some changes, and the revised budget will show the changes that were made, and the bottom line is still the same. So, basically, there was a backhoe loader that was contemplated for $125,000, and Jim Portley thought it was best to buy other equipment and not the backhoe loader. Instead, he bought the mini excavator and the mini loader, which we then moved $90,000 and $35,000 into those two accounts for the budget, okay, from the $125,000. And then you see that $89,000 was the price of the excavator, and then $44,000 was the price of the loader, so, okay? Then there was...
So, but the sum of those actually exceeded the...
Right.
By about...
Right.
By $10,000, the original.
Yes. And then, well, if you, if you, now if you jump down to the wood chipper, the wood chipper was budgeted for 60, purchased for 53, so there's a savings there. All of it kind of, you know...
Balances are washed up.
Balances to each other. The two trucks that he's requesting today are the $185,000 trucks that we're going to encumber, if you approve them, $110,000 for each one, but that's only for, I think, the cab and chassis, it's not for the fully outfitted sand or plow attachment. So that's what the $75,000 will be left for. He'll confirm that, I'm pretty sure that that's, that's what they're planning. And the, the, there's another six-wheel, a six-wheel pickup that was awarded, but I don't know exactly what's happening with that one. There was an encumbrance for $78,000, and that goes back several months, and you can probably ask Jim about that today.
That was the Ford 550?
Yes. And there may be a problem with purchasing the vehicle for the price, I'm not quite sure exactly the issue there, but he could probably expand on that. But bottom line, there's still $430,000 left, and the bulk of it is for the sweeper, which hasn't been purchased yet, but even with that, there's still money to cover all of the equipment that he's looking at.
Okay.
So, he could probably explain.
He's next, I understand, but I don't see him here.
I'm talking about him, he's not here, I thought he was...
That's a good time to talk about him, when he's not here. Okay. Does somebody want to give Jim a call, and we'll, thank you. Any other questions for the Finance Director? Okay, if not, we'll, thank you, Sheila.
Okay.
You're going to hang around?
I'll be here.
Okay. I'm going to move on to item seven. If anybody has an objection to that, no. Consider and take possible action on a request to waive Section 14-2A of the Town Code to allow the serving of alcohol beverages during the St. George Men's Club Group Golf Tournament at the Guilford Lakes Golf Course on September 12th, 2015, rain date September 19th. Bob? Good morning, how you doing?
Good.
It's become an annual event now, huh?
Yes, it's trying to.
You want a motion to that?
Yeah, Bobby, you want to give us a little... Yeah, it's going to be the same format as the last two. We're just serving beer and wine. We'll be playing two tournaments, they both go around twice, so it'll be, last year we had 60 players, and no incidences, everything went very smooth. The two charities, 100% of the profit, will go to St. Martin Depores Academy in New Haven, and our own Guilford Fund for Education, and we're hoping to have another successful event, and the town's been very supportive, as well as the golf course. People at the golf course have been excellent. So we're very happy, and we hope that we could do it again. We will have the insurance done again, and we need the temporary permit, and I need the waiver, so the police chief can sign it on the permit.
So, as Bob mentioned, once this board acts on it, then we send it out to police departments for their approval. Are you going to make a motion, Cole?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we waive Section 214-2A of the Town Code to allow the serving of alcohol beverages during the St. George Men's Group Golf Tournament at the Guilford Lakes Golf Course on September 12th, 2015, rain date September 19th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, thanks, gentlemen.
Okay, good. Well, what do you get there, we'll take it. Okay. Item eight, we'll move along, discuss and take possible action on a proclamation reaffirming the town's continued commitment toward full ADA compliance. You have a proclamation in your packet, you can waive the reading. Do I have a motion to accept the proclamation and to sign it?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Trace, you have the one for signature, right? Okay. Item nine, consider and take possible action on programs to be included in the 2015 Neighborhood Assistance Act program, and an ordinance to amend the code. These are two items, we'll start with one. Okay, let's take the first one, which, the Neighborhood Assistance Act program, which is in relation to the first public hearing we had. Do I have a motion?
I moved that we accept the programs that are, the Neighborhood Assistance Act, and...
You want to include all the four programs?
And the four programs.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Good luck to him.
Yep. And just a reminder, what, what this is all about is that the four... And just a reminder, what this is all about is that the four organizations that apply to the board when we approve this motion, and I assume we are going to approve it, will be eligible to receive... Be designated, I should say, that any one who contributes to their organization will get tax credits on their return. So, anyone who donates to these organizations when they file their tax returns will get credits on their state tax return. That being said, all those in favor?
Do we just want to note the lifelines that Gary started to note didn't attend today?
Yeah, we can...
Well, it's one of the four.
Yeah, it's just one of the four. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes, okay. The other item nine, an ordinance to amend the code of the Town of Guilford, Chapter 214 Parks and Public Places as a result of the earlier public hearing. And again, this is the only change, is to allow dogs on non-swimming beaches. So, they would still be prohibited from, to make it very simple, Jacobs and Lake Quanapaw. Isn't that simple enough?
Yeah. I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'm second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I have some concerns with it, Joe, honestly. Despite some of the stuff that was said, I know at least three of these beaches do have people that sit on the beaches, use them to swim from, go in from, and I'm concerned that having... And I'm especially concerned by some of the comments that were made during the meeting, because whatever happens, we have a leash law. And all dogs on the beach must be leashed. And they're talking about dogs running up and down the beaches. They're talking about dogs in the water. I don't know how you put a dog in the water without a leash and let him go swimming without a leash. So, there's some inconsistencies that I see in this. I, you know... And I understand that responsible dog owners, of which I include myself, try to pick up after the dog, but I don't want my grandchildren on a beach after the dog has done what he's done. So, I'm bothered by this. I'm also bothered by the fact that almost all of these are adjacent to shellfish areas. We have 1,250 paid shellfish licensees in this town that I think... And there's some dispute about whether this is valuable, and I hear the arguments about the dogs chase the birds. And I understand, you know, what birds do and dogs do. But I also know that every state and municipal swimming beach... And I understand the difference. And we don't want to make these swimming beaches, because then we have an obligation to put up facilities and all that sort of stuff. But every state and municipal swimming beach excludes dogs during the summer season, which is shellfishing season, and which is the season. Some of them exclude them 24/7, 365, but a lot of them allow them in the winter, which is fine. So, I'm concerned that we have an ordinance that allows changes to six areas which are used by multiple people. We didn't have anybody here from Mako. I had mentioned, I don't know whether it was to Rick or to you, somebody that I hoped that somebody from Mako would be here to discuss how they would enforce it. I guess what I would suggest, I would like to suggest, is if there's a way that we can experiment with one area, and it's clear that we're only dealing with one area here, because there's nobody from anybody other than Daniels Avenue. If we could do a trial basis, see if there are any complaints, see if there are any problems before we put through an ordinance which affects every shore space, I would like to explore a way to do that. So, I have... Well, I have a problem with this, because I think it's... Has a substantial ability for abuses.
Well, you know, I'd like to say, I think everyone understands that we have ordinances about dogs in public places. And whether dog owners like it or not, these dogs have to be on leashes, and they have to be picked up after. And as one speaker suggested, you know, or asked for a fine if those rules aren't upheld, and we have the wording in our ordinance that people can be fined. So, you know, if we change this ordinance, as so many people want us to, it is going to be a test, because if we find that there's a problem and people aren't being responsible, then we could just change it back. I mean, you know, Guilford is blessed, because we have so many areas that give the public access to the beach, to the water. But we also have ordinances about being responsible animal owners or dog owners. So, it's just a question of, you know, either the people have to uphold the law, or they won't be allowed in the future.
But I think we have very, very limited resources to enforce the law. I mean, we've seen it on some of the open space areas where people go out, and there's a leash law, and you walk out there, and there are dogs running free. And, you know, we have two Mako officers. Is that correct? I'm correct, Joe, too. Which means, you know, in the course of seven days, 24 hours, half the time, there's no coverage, and they're difficult to enforce.
But Gary, that speaks to your issue about your suggestion of trying it at trial at one beach, in particular, Daniels Beach, because that group showed up today. I think Carl hits it on the head. This is effectively a trial. I mean, it grew out of a situation, and this is an attempt to, you know, find, you know, some mutually acceptable agreement. If it works out that one group or the other is irresponsible with their pets, then we can always go the other way. I mean, that takes care of the trial thing. As far as the issue of, you know, the shellfish and the leash laws and everything, I mean, those are in existence, you know? Do we have enough people? Do we want to just sit there policing every little, you know, infraction? Now, I don't know if that's where we really want to go with the community. If we don't have a dog park, you know, I still support it. I understand your concerns about the other things, but those are concerns with people walking on the green today.
Two things. Gary, as far as... I understand where you're coming from. But to say that we don't have enough Mako officers to enforce the law, well... Taking that analogy, we don't have enough policemen to enforce our speeding laws. So... And that's too bad, because...
It's too bad.
Too many people speed.
No, I'm not suggesting we add more Mako.
I know that.
They have a lot of ground to cover, and not much.
The second thing is, I hate to put Park and Rec on the spot, but they've had testimony at their commission meetings before they made the change and suggested the change be brought to this board. So, I would like to call the chairman, I see sitting there, for his comments, if he so wishes to address the board. And/or the director, or both. I see them both coming up here. And I'd like to hear their comments.
Jack Penders, Chairperson, Parks and Recreation Commission. I and the commission fully support the proposed change in the charter. As far as the enforcement opposition is concerned, I mean, we have enforcement of SCADs and SCADs of ordinances in this town. And yet, we have enforcement for violations of dogs, other animals. And we have violations for all other sorts of things. We have violations, or there are violations, for those who violate the shellfish regulations as well. And a lot of what they do is self-enforcing. But they too would help enforce any fecal matter that might be in the waters by their periodic, if not monthly, soil samples and water... Excuse me, their water samples, which they bring down to the Agriculture Center in...
Milford.
In Milford. And there are also violations if someone doesn't have a license. There are violations if someone takes too many shells, too many clams, if they take clams that are too small, and even if they discard the clams and leave them in piles, as people often do. And there are also violations for the times when those shellfishes are closed due to excess rain or whatever, in the judgment of the Shellfish Commission determines. So, there's enforcement everywhere. And as far as Daniels Beach and the other five areas are concerned, we would submit that it would entail less enforcement, because dogs won't be prohibited on those beaches. They are prohibited on the beaches, at Jacobs Beach. They are prohibited on Lake Quanapaw. But it would not occur there. And also, there's a self-enforcing mechanism as well, or there would be a self-enforcing mechanism, namely, the other dog owners who will participate for reasons of health, for their health, their well-being, and also the well-being of the dogs, too. And let's forget, this is not just about dogs. It's about people. So, that... It's self-enforcing.
Well, and I think that's going to be a big part of it, because the responsible dog owners that are here, it behooves all of them to make sure that nobody's breaking the rules, because, like we just said, if this goes for a year and we start to get complaints about people just letting dogs run wild, then something's going to have to be done about it. But the responsible dog owners, if they help enforce this by making sure that, you know, if someone does let a dog run wild, that somebody go up and say, "You can't do that."
And it's no different, no different, Mr. Seligman, from people bringing their dogs right outside here on the town green.
Oh, yeah.
Same thing. That's self-enforcing as well.
I mean, ordinance can always be changed.
It can.
If it gets out of hand, I can assure you, in a year or two, we will be reversing this.
And we're mindful of that.
Or adjust.
We are mindful of that. We are. And to the point of your specific question of us, we had, in effect, a public hearing at the Parks and Recreation Commission about a year ago about this very same issue of so-called dogs on the beaches. And that's the common term, but they're not beaches, as we know. They're seashore areas. They're not beaches like Jacobs Beach. They're not beaches like Lake Quanapaw. But we had maybe 15 or 20 folks testifying about the desire for it, for them, for their dogs, for their well-being, but also unsolicited that they would enforce and help to enforce it if it were enacted, because they too knew well the consequences or the possible consequences of fecal matter on the beach. And that would be by dogs. And there's fecal matter from other creatures as well on every beach, including those beaches. There's the big nest of ospreys up above. One of the shellfishing areas recently was shut down, not because of the water supply, but some geese. And the Shellfish Commission took appropriate action on that. And there's also, without being too scatological, there's also the fecal matter of infants. And there's also the possibility of bacteria from those who dare to go into the water down there, dare at their own risk from, you know, their clothing. That's been documented. There's also the possibility of contamination on those shoreline areas of the culvert that comes by the, I guess it's the western end of Jacobs Beach, where the water rushes in, and these culverts probably is with a diameter maybe twice that window, if that window were a circle. That's rushing in there at all times. And there's also the, whatever comes down from the land that's north of Jacobs Avenue. Excuse me, Daniels Avenue, from that water, because of... And I don't want to raise any issues, but from, I'd say, sanitary issues or the lack thereof. So, that all contributes. So, it's really not fair to say that if there is a problem, therefore, it must be the dogs and, most importantly, the dog owners. That doesn't stand the test of common sense.
Rick, you had your hand up.
Well, I've never heard the word "scatological" before. I don't know if it has to do with scat, maybe, I don't know, but...
Maybe I'm singing the wrong tune.
But I just want to comment, as Jack mentioned, about the self-enforcing. We, I mean, we get it all the time with the athletic fields, you know? The users of fields will sometimes call me, let me know if there's an issue. There's maybe there's a hole in the field, or goose droppings, or whatever. The people who use it help manage it in a way. And often, neighbors who live near a park will call and let me know if there's something going on. And, well, I don't want to put her on the spot, but we have Mrs. Delaney, who lives right on the corner. And she was the partner. She's been a great watchdog for that beach. She'll often let me know if there's something going on, kids partying, or whatever. She lives right there. And so, I'm sure that she's also in favor of the dogs here. I'm sure that I would hear from people if there was abuse going on.
Okay. You heard some suggestions here today.
Yeah.
I hope you follow up on them. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
Jack, you lost me on the shellfish enforcement issue. I know the shellfish have wardens, and they enforce their regulations, but what does that have... They would have no authority to enforce dog regulations.
There are another pair of eyes there on the beaches. If they saw something that they thought was in violation of the town ordinances, I'm sure they would let the proper authorities know. I would hope they would, because that would help us as well.
It's certainly not part of...
They're not out there with blinders, just looking at the shellfish.
It's not part of their current charge.
No, it's not. But as users of that area of the town, it would be in their interest to let people know as well.
Are we ready for vote?
Yeah, I would...
All those...
I would like to propose an amendment that we change the ordinance to apply at this time only to Daniels Beach and monitor that process, rather than approve it for six different areas with issues of monitoring and enforcing.
Well, Gary, people cannot swim at Chaffinch Island.
I've seen them in the water in Chaffinch.
Excuse me, Carl, there's a motion.
There's a motion.
Is there a second to that amendment? No second, okay. Motion dies. Amendment dies, okay. Carl, you want to say something?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, you know, if people are swimming in an area where they're not supposed to swim, they're swimming at their own risk, and they're breaking an ordinance.
You're not prohibited from swimming off of Chaffinch, or off of Shell Beach, or off of Grass Island. And people do go in...
I thought there was no swimming at Chaffinch Island. There's no lifeguard there.
There's no lifeguard.
Lifeguard, no.
There's no lifeguard, there's no facilities, but that doesn't keep you...
Swim at your own risk.
People go in the water in all of those areas.
There's no further discussion. I'll call question, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the change to the ordinance? Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Three to one, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, I'll take up 9A at this point, which is the approval of the contract with Valley Shores Communications. This is the replacement of our CMed organization. Chief, you want to... Chief Herschel? Give us some background information on this. Morning, Chief.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, CMed in the Haven is out of business effective July 1st, and Valley Shores is the one the board that we've been negotiating with to come onboard. It can be considerable savings to the town. They're going to be offering the service that we need. we need. Much, our current budget is forty-five thousand dollars, and this Valley Shore is going to be about eighty-five hundred. I recommend the board sign the contract.
Contract has been reviewed by our in-house counsel. I got a message from First Selectman Pearson in Madison. They have, Madison has approved the contract. First Selectman Pearson told me he had signed it on Friday. First Selectman Cogsgrove in Brantford is about to sign the contract for that town, and because three towns, Madison, Brantford-
Have you told them Brantford and Madison have already signed?
They have signed it. And Guilford went in together with Valley Shores and negotiated this contract you see in front of you. And we've, we've tweaked it to our liking, I should say, the three councils, town councils have tweaked it, and with the fire chiefs of the three towns. Or Madison, it was the ambulance service there, because they don't have a paid fire department there, so. It's a terrific savings financially for the town, and will provide the same core services, and I underline the word core services, which is patch, communications, and mutual aid, which is all we need. So I'd like to chief-
Motion authorized.
Yeah, I'd like to chief, I recommend passage of this contract. Any motion?
Well, it's effective July first, so it's an authorization for you to enter into it?
Correct.
That's what I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? See now, I'll call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, chief.
Delaney.
Okay. We'll go back to item six, Town Engineer Jim Portley, discuss and take possible action on a water bid five dash fifteen sixteen to twenty sixteen, six-wheel dump trucks, cab and chassis only, subject to the recommendation from the Board of Finance in accordance with the April nine twenty thirteen bond resolution. Please, James.
Good morning. There was a discommunication between myself and the chairman of the Public Works Commission about a week and a half ago, in which I had asked to put this on the agenda. The Public Works Commission is not meeting until Thursday, so I talked to him this morning, it's not affecting, he had called Friday, and he asked that we table this until Public Works Commission can actually review this and make their recommendation. I, I have no objection. I thought we were clear on it, but I'm not the best communicator.
I'll move that we table it until the next meeting.
We moved to endorse his last statement.
As Rosanna, Rosanna Downey used to say, never mind.
I'll second the move. To table.
The next meeting, right, Jim?
Yes.
Well, that'll be our July meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, your table.
Thank you. Oh, good.
Sheila worked this all up for you?
I know, I appreciate all her hard efforts. I'm sure you look old.
So we'll, you can take that off, do you afford a finance agenda? You can tell the chairman that tonight. Something we said?
No, I just got to, I got to corral him before he leaves.
Oh, okay. We can continue.
He's got a problem, I believe.
He's got a problem. Item ten, appointments and resignations, we have only one appointment. Ten dot one, act on a recommendation to designate the current inland wetlands commission. Member Richard Meyer as the representative from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Eleven, request for the use of town property, we have only one. Eleven dot one, act on a request from the Henry Woodfield Museum to place a sign on the green advertising its following programs, Halloween hysteria, ten twenty-four, harvesting history, eleven twenty-seven to the twenty-nine, Firelight Festival, twelve four, sign placements, ten ten to ten twenty-four, eleven thirteen to eleven twenty-nine, eleven twenty-nine to twelve four. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Correspondence, you have the monthly building officials' monthly report, and twelve dot two, the public works' monthly report. Any comments? Building officials, looks like they're moving along. Committee reports, anybody? I don't think Carl had any. All business, I have none. New business? None, okay. Public forum, limited to three minutes on any item. Mr. Esposito, I think you would like to address the board.
Yes. You know, Esposito, this is in regard to the Northern Heights open space that I leased from the town. Do you want me to go through the whole explanation of the problem?
Yeah, you have a couple of minutes.
Okay. I leased that, and the main problem is, I'm currently going through a divorce, and my soon-to-be ex-wife thinks that she has the right to use that property, and she doesn't. And I just want to make the board aware that she has been using it, and she has no agreement with the town, because I have an LLC that I, that I am the sole member, okay? And the LLC is which has the lease with the town. She has no insurance that I'm aware of, no, no workers' comp insurance that I'm aware of, and she does not have my permission to use it. And I've tried to work something out with her, and we can't come to any kind of agreement. She continues to use it, we had the police there again last night, and it's my duty as the leaser to notify the town when there's something wrong, which I did. I've notified you, I've notified Kevin McGee, and I notified the police department. Because if somebody infringes upon that, it's my responsibility to notify you. The problem that I'd like to clear up is, I don't understand why the town doesn't stand behind me, because I'm doing what I'm supposed to do, and I don't understand how, when I've made you aware that she has no insurance and no agreement, that you're allowing her to, to use it, and you don't do anything about it. So moreover, as a taxpayer, I want to know how you're putting the town in jeopardy of people being up there with equipment and the animals up there with no insurance, when they have no, when she has no agreement with the town.
Excuse me, I am his, uh, supposedly soon-to-be ex-wife. This is my son, Michael, our son. These are not my cows, they're Michael's. Now, I do have insurance on them. I've paid the town pasture and everything else. We went through this last year, and all he's doing is for us not to be able to use it. It's a civil matter, it's in our court, between the lawyers, and all he's doing is harassing us all the time. He takes things out of there, he, he brings brush there, he says, "It's brush, I had to get a burn permit to burn fence posts, stumps, and everything else." Now, this is Michael, stand. Say something. What about the pasture? They're not your cows?
Excuse me.
My cows.
Okay, could I, could I just, can I just stop this for a moment, please? First of all, I don't normally, oh, the selectmen don't normally comment in public forum, all right? But I will at this time, because an accusation has been made against me. Mr. Esposito, we did meet, you did meet with inland wetlands, you did meet with Kevin McGee. I heard your complaints, I did forward them to our town attorney.
Yes.
I had your, the town attorney discuss the situation with you. He did follow up with a letter that I have in front of me.
Yes.
And the town attorney also sent me an email as late as Friday. And he did say, according to the agreement that you have with the town, it is your responsibility to take care of any third-party infractions, not the town's.
Right.
So when you say, "I didn't do anything," or "the town didn't do anything," we have no obligation to do anything, according to the town attorney.
Okay.
All right, now, this is, this is a domestic matter, which I've been advised to stay out of.
Okay.
And none of the selectmen should be involved with it. And I can't have that in public forum. So it, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry, sir, you two have to work it out.
Okay, but just for clarification, if somebody infracts on there, it's my responsibility to keep them out of there?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's what the attorneys have told me.
Correct.
And I have to abide by them, I pay them, and the town pays them, the taxpayers pay them.
Correct.
And I can't do anything more than that.
Okay.
Okay?
So that's clear then. So if somebody, whoever it is, is not supposed to be on there, it's my responsibility to get them out of there.
That's according to the agreement.
Okay.
And I have a law here that backs that up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I am a part owner of Stone Ridge Farm LLC. He might have his name on it, and we are still married. So he's been doing this just to harass us, he wants us to get rid of the cows, I'm sure that's what this whole thing is about.
Okay, ma'am, I can't, can't do any more than that. Okay? You two have to work it out, it's a domestic matter. It's all I can say.
Well, Kevin McGee had told me that he, I paid the rent, he paid the rent, and he told Kevin McGee that he wanted to make sure Michael got the use of the pasture.
I, I have to talk to Kevin McGee, I, I don't know what you're-
I know, he's out of town until the twenty-seventh.
All right. Thank you. Is there any further business come before the board? I'll, seeing that, I'll call for, no, motion to adjourn?
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.